Yeah, you ready? All right. Follow me in order and everyone's standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Standing in for President Teresa Raya and Kerry John, Vice President of the Board. So we are looking to approve the agenda, that most approve the agenda. Second by Sue, second by Dale, you change through the agenda?
Nope.
Paul and David.
Hi.
Hi.
I oppose. Steven, what's your carries? Uh, item number three on the agenda is the code of conduct, student athletics. So what I would like to do, and we have a number of coaches that have joined us on the agenda, and these are individuals that serve a multitude of coaching positions, varsity JV, modified boys' sports, girls' sports. And so we appreciate them taking some time out of their day to help us take a look at an issue that has come up to us over the last couple of weeks. A couple of points of clarification as we have the conversation, and I'm sure that there will be some additional conversation. The issue at hand is an offshoot of our district Code of Conduct, which talks about student conduct. The athletic code of conduct is not a policy that the board has approved in any time since I've been in the district. It is the equivalent of a set of classroom rules that governs athletics, similar to how a classroom teacher would have a set of rules under the overall overall of the district guidelines. In this case, the classroom would be athletics, varsity JV, modified, or unified sports. And it governs how individual athletes interact in the school setting as athletes. And the whole philosophy of the code for athletics was to develop the entire individual framework, any part of the document, through sports, intramurals, clubs, or school activities related to athletics. The code which we're looking at tonight, or the guidelines that we're looking at tonight, is specifically for athletics, and there is not an umbrella that deals with co-curriculars like drama, robotics, other than the overall code of conduct for student participation in athletics. So this is an enhancement, an addition, an extension, specifically identifying athletes. The sports that are covered, as I noted, include varsity JV, modified, and unified sports at any level, any sport that occurs in the district. The concern that has come up is regarding the phased consequences for individuals who commit an infraction with the athletic student code. Typically, those actions or infractions involve the use or possession of alcohol, illegal substances, tobacco products, or something else that's not under direct physician's care. It can also be included or inferred that it could be any conduct that's detrimental to the school environment, such as chronic absenteeism, violence towards others, cyber misconduct, or intentional disregard for school code of conduct. Those would fall under the larger umbrella of the district code of conduct. Simply put, you can violate the athletic code of conduct and most likely significantly violate the student district code of conduct, which is board approved. The key factor here is where does the infraction occur? And how were we made aware of it? And that's right in the student athletic code, and that's really what we'd like to discuss. All right. So just briefly, and then I'll turn it over to the board and then perhaps Mr. Bertozic or some of the others on the call. The current matrix has three offense categories, first, second, and third offense. In the first offense, there's parent or police notification. If the violation occurs in school, the district code of conduct supersedes the athletic code of conduct. The suspension is 33% of the current season, and if this is not met, then the 33% carries over to the next athletic season. Make the athlete may continue to practice, and the superintendent, parent, athlete hearing may occur for the final determination. The second offense does not have a notation of parent or police notification. It also specifies if it occurs on district grounds, then the athlete loses 100% of the competition. If that's not met, it carries over to 100% of the next athletic season. So you can see there's some conflict there of perhaps some concerns about double jeopardy or forward consequences. The athlete may continue to practice, but if they've lost all athletic eligibility, there may be some internal motivational conflicts there. A parent or a superintendent hearing may occur. And the third violation is a one-year suspension. No notification of parent, no district, no appeal process. It's a one-year ban if it occurs on school grounds. In terms of a conflict matrix, the first offense, meaning the student has one infraction or no priors, there is no counseling component that can be required, no real appeal process articulated, and as we've had some conversations, no community service option to reduce the suspension. The second offense in the matrix, which is perhaps a suspension of the remainder of the season, there is no consideration for good behavior or remediated or changed behavior. And for the third offense, there is no conflict, a ban is a ban, and it's pretty clear. One of the things that has come up is our concern as an organization subscribing to education and growth, is I'm concerned, and it's why I've brought this conversation forward, for a first-time offender is that I feel as though there should be an opportunity for counseling and corrective action. We have plenty of staff in district that care about kids and that can provide some support and referrals and guidance. I think the sports seasons are inconsistent. A third of one season could be more than, significantly more than 100% of another season. Football is an in-game season, basketball is 20. So the math doesn't work, and certain sports would be over consequence compared to others if you look straight at the numbers. We have had conversations about a community service option to reduce that infraction. And I want to be clear, no one, and I mean no one, is advocating for an athlete to violate the code of conduct for drug or alcohol or illegal substances. No one that I'm aware of, including myself, is advocating that there's no consequence after the first offense. We're looking at keeping a consequence and adding counseling components to that and making sure that we're not crushing the will of a teenager who may make a mistake. And that's kind of where we're at within this process. But I do want to just clarify that the athletic code is not the code of conduct, it's an offshoot of that, similar to classroom rules. So I think it's healthy to have a conversation, and with that, I think that's all I wanted to share with the board and with the committee.
Well, I guess the first thing I wanted to mention is, in the athletes agreement, it specifically states a school-sponsored event, if the events occur during a school-sponsored event. Yes. If it was on our property or during one of the events. Or something we cited, yeah. Right. So and then to clarify, if we're talking about something that was not during a school-sponsored event, they still sign the athlete code of conduct stating that they agree to not do certain things.
Correct.
For me, one of the first things we need to clear up is that, that it specifically states a school-sponsored event in or on a school, on a school premises.
Yeah, there's conflict because if a student, and again, I'll use an example that has not occurred, students go on the senior trip, it's during the spring, and they find themselves in an occurrence with alcohol. It has happened in other school districts, so it's not out of the realm of possibility. That is a school-sponsored event, they would, the district code of conduct would call, that particular student would likely get a three or four extended out of school suspension. That would typically be the case, substitute any drug of choice or illegal substance for a minor. The district code of conduct would penalize that athlete, and then they would then also be subject to an athletic suspension as well. In addition to, so they could serve their suspension out of school, in this case, or in school, for that case either. And then they could also then get a second consequence for the suspension based on the athletic code of, perhaps, if it's a spring season, it could be as many as five or eight additional contests.
I'd like to know, you started out with that the student-athlete policy is not an official per se policy. There's, for that to be official, a timeline, and also a scale of infraction to all the different teams that have various games and so forth, but I mean, just spelling it right out, like I know with anything that I have to write for my board, I have to list it into the full order. So rather, you know, like you mentioned before, the 33% sort of interpreted however. Work on that, and the actual scale that just sells it right out, so we don't have to worry about all these conversations again.
Yeah. One of the things that, and again, we've had this for with students who've done things in school, and it's less common, I think, and the numbers may, you know, be somewhat different. I am difficult with the percentage because it's not equal across sports. And when we have something that is not equal across sports, then we have not equal across genders, and that's something that sends a reply to me. In this particular instance, was triggered, this conversation happened off-school, our level of jurisdiction is thin, other than self-reporting. I would much rather see it be a straight number, and then it's consistent.
So in the case of football, you're saying it's normally around three games, where it could be three times that for bad people?
Yeah. That's my right, yeah.
Yeah, so the difference, I guess, when that was created, so the basketball season is 20 games, and say, we use 25, well, it's a goal of two games. Everybody gets two games suspended, that's 10% of the season. If it's football, it's a two-game suspension, now a eight-game, that's 25. So from a percentage standpoint, they're missing more of the season. So that was kind of the reason why it was initially within the picture.
It also mirrors the NCAA and most athletic practice.
With the percentage?
Yep. So our code of conduct, this code is very similar to what you'll find officially developed, which is why I think it's important that if they're going to go on the couch, we need to understand the same rules that we put in place here, have the same rules that will give you the loser scholarship, get you kicked off the team instantly, and the repercussions are very, very similar. There's no why I should say that. The scale and process is similar. Ours is significantly less punitive, right? Not like they're on loser scholarship, they're not going to bring them to school. I know in having a student in college who's very good friends with most of the athletes, or at least three of the teams, drinking is a big deal. They are scared to death of being caught because of the repercussions that are attached with the team. And I think it's important for us at the high school level to make sure that if we are going to do our best to prepare them for life outside of here, that they understand that we put rules in place that are similar to what they're going to experience in college. So that percentage piece is pretty much, I reviewed many college athlete code of conduct, almost all of them are by, that's really the only fair way to define, right? I mean, if it's, you know, if it's basketball, there's going to be a lot more contests in two weeks than there is in football. And we go 25% that goes without goals.
I'm saying it's something that we should, that is that we should consider in whether or not the percentages occur in offense two or three, or one, two, and three, and add a, you know, deferral, or a first offender status for someone that may make a mistake. I think that the percentages work for repeat offenders, I think that works, but I, from a counseling mental health perspective, I hate throwing the book at a kid if there's no priors. If athlete, student has had repeated offenses, and they happen to then be an athlete, we have a number of students who are single-sport athletes who are not great except in the season. And we see that the other way. I'm okay with the percentages, but I'm troubled by the non-counseling delusion approach to try to remedy it. Well, personally, I have a vision of the concept, maybe a life thing. Number one, I think we've got to figure out, is it a number or is it a percentage? You know, and I like the percentage idea because again, that is fair across the games, you know? It is. What's, what's the least amount of games in the season? Is it football with seven or eight? Then what has the most?
Basketball, baseball.
Basketball. Ball 20 contests?
Yeah.
And they might be playing multiple games a week? Well, one of the things that you mentioned, multiple games in a week, and if you're arbitrarily giving a one or two-game suspension for football, that's two weeks. For basketball, that's potentially three days. Yeah, they might have a Monday and a Wednesday game, and their suspension is over in 10 days. So that whole time thing, giving them the opportunity to pick up what they did, why do these consequences replace? To me, I think that's important. And if we're going to go with a percentage where it's spread out a little bit more all the time, if we are going to add a counselor piece or anything else, that gives you time to do that.
One of the things, I believe in the ministerial standpoint, we cannot mandate help, but we can recommend counseling to reduce the suspension to a different number of weeks, to put that in series.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that would be something. So here's the key, right? And I personally feel a slight amount of discomfort because this is not a school policy, not a school board rule. It is a practice that has been developed, like you said, classroom rules by coaches, athletes, and the athletic director. And now we're taking that away from that and looking at it from a governing stance. So that rules can be whatever we want them, because this isn't coming unless we decide that it's going to turn into a big school policy, and then all of the things that have to go along with. If it's simply a contract essentially that exists between the students and the coaches and the athletic and the school, we can, we can very easily put counseling, so we can have that be part of the process. And that's one of the benefits of it staying in that realm, is that we can do all sorts of things that the school board might not be able to manage.
And I mean, one, I mean, this, honestly, the policy contract has been more over, I mean, how is the athletic director, it changed during that time? And I know when I was the athletic director, the first offense was 25%, and the second offense was 50, the third percent was 100. As, and that would carry over through the season. And then as it kind of warped, it ended up changing to the 33% in the full year and so on. So I mean, those are obviously completely immediately really.
I, because of the masks, I can hear everybody, but it's not all clear. But I'm hearing you, but sometimes I get a little guarded up, so if you can just speak up just a little bit.
So you can hear us, but you don't know what we're saying.
It's on the mask.
You guys are really muffled.
They're talking, they're talking very quiet even in here.
Yeah.
It's talking super quiet even.
So use our cafeteria voice.
Yes.
So what does the athletic director think?
I, you know, I'm just, I'm going through the code and just circling terms and words in here that create some of these questions. And when instances come up, they're always different, and that's why I think the process that we have in place going forward, and it could be based solely off of this, I just want to make sure that when the instances do happen, that we're following some sort of process, consistent, and then on our end, getting out in front of it, more so with the access to what's in our community right now, and, you know, what's possibly going on amongst our student athletes and our students in general, and maybe making more of a point to address that at the beginning. I feel like maybe our parent-athlete educational pieces fail a bit over the course of the last few years, and not being able to get together with parents and family before the school year really hurt that. I Zoomed four times, but you're not necessarily getting that message out. You know, I don't think anyone's, you know, challenging the fact that punishment area and all, the discipline needs to be there, but why the heck are you doing it so much? Or why are you doing it? Why didn't you, it's also important. Just to try to hold the connection solid.
And I will say, you know, the other piece, again, for a long time, we've never reached the third level. You know, there's not, you know, there is a number of students that end up with the first level, there's maybe in the 12 years, a handful of students that went to, you know, the second offense. We've never been to the third one, where the kid's been suspended for 100%. But I definitely agree with adding a counseling piece.
Well, if we don't, I feel like we fail. I mean, as an organization, what are we here to do? We're here to teach these children, we're here to help develop, we're here to prepare them to life, like Dan said. Well, if we're not going to add in that educational piece to it, I think we fail. There is a. And again, I mean, you know, obviously legally as a board, there are probably restrictions or whatever we can move on. Again, I got, I have the doctor helping right here. Agreement, and at the very end of it, there is a signature. Return this form to the office. I have read, understand, and agreed to abide by this code of conduct and the consequences that have been outlined in the code. I have also been provided information dealing with the seriousness of concussions and treatment of concussion. So it goes into a little bit of the concussion code. Well, the biggest part is they're reading this and they're agreeing to it. And maybe it is that educational piece that we may need these fair-handled meetings even more. If one meeting isn't getting it done, four meetings, four meetings, four meetings, do it every season. Right now, we do it twice a year, right?
We did two before fall and two before winter, we'll do two before spring.
Okay, you are doing every season then? Okay.
This year especially because of the capability of Zoom, it makes it a little easier, right? Going forward, I would like to keep the Zoom piece, but also add in person, which we can maybe make more of a presentation.
And maybe just for context, so every season, how many athletes do we have that have violated the athletic code of conduct?
I, we've had two. Two both this year.
Okay. And then last year?
Okay, no one.
Just so we recognize, this isn't like.
Two students or two instances?
There's been two student athletes code of conduct suspensions up until.
Okay. And then none last year.
Not below.
That's my point, is that this is, I don't want people to think that we have six, seven people every season. This is, we have one incident with two people this year.
Prior to. Yeah, prior to.
Prior to.
Prior to what? Three.
Prior to. Okay, so we have a total of three incidents.
Three incidents.
Three incidents this year, and none less.
Trust me, there's more out there.
You know. Well, I'm not saying that this, but, so, you know, the other part of this is, you know, we don't go necessarily searching and investigating everybody's home on Saturday to see what people are doing. But usually they have to rise to a level that draws our attention to it, and they're significant in those cases.
Shows up on social media or something that is surprising.
And that's a whole other lesson that the students need to learn as well. The implications of posting everything on social media.
While not directly related to the code, that's probably a conversation to have with student athletes. And the other thing too here that, in fairness, this is targeted specifically to athletes, but doesn't talk about the other co-curriculars. I think we have any consistency here, and I wouldn't use serious words to say we failed. We now have an awareness of some things we can do much better. And we have a lot of kids involved, and I agree wholeheartedly that if you're involved in putting on our school colors and our uniforms and representing the school district, there is a higher standard. It may be wrong to assume that, but we all know that there is. And we want those individual student, athlete, student, co-curricular participants to go out and represent us in the best possible light. We know, like every school district in the pandemic, we have difficulty reaching a number of kids that aren't involved in anything, that aren't participating in any sport or any club or any activity. In fact, getting them to school is some days a challenge. I just want us to not throw the book at a kid when there is an infraction. Our young kids, 12, 13, 14, so the modified sports up until 21, the unified sports, that's a wide range of developmental abilities and a lot of social pressure. I just want to see a counseling component in here rather than going immediately to a long-term suspension. There still need to be a consequence, but it should be equally applied to athletes, drama, co-curriculars, and everything else. That's a gap that I think we can easily adjust it for. The co-curriculars, like athletic, could also be having a preseason meeting of that in some capacity. And that's my goal here. There needs to be consequences for the individuals in this current iteration of infractions. 100%, I'm all for that. And I'd like to see the counseling component included in that as well, or community service or something, that's what support the virgin program will do, and it can send a message to the other kids too.
Okay. How would we do it for the other ones? This one is specifically for athletics. What would the other one be? Would it be another agreement, whatever the program is in school, not necessarily a board policy?
I don't think it needs to be a board policy, it can be a board directive that we're going to pursue this with the building principles, as well as the co-curricular advisors.
And honestly, I think it would just mirror pretty much the, the athletic. It's going to be different, we've got, obviously, Brown Club will produce, right? So, you know, how do you?
You do ask one and ask two.
So I mean, there would have to be, and maybe that's more of a counseling component.
Yeah. We can take a look at it.
Any tricks there.
We can take a look at that.
But let's not assume that we don't have this already in existence. Well, I mean, almost every co-curricular honor society has their own set of rules. I know when I worked with providing teams, we had our own set of expectations. I'm concerned about taking that right away from everyone, the coach and advisor, and now replacing it with a, or a place. I think, I think, I have believed that our advisors and our teachers are doing their job, and that that's important to them, and that these things exist already. Maybe we need to be looking and asking for those to get turned in, but I think we're jumping to the assumption that they don't exist, but I know for a fact that almost every one of our organizations has their own expectation before they even start up. Some of them are harder than this. You know, you have to have academics. We already have academics again, or Eli. All of the honor societies are significantly more stringent than our athletic.
Perhaps the most stringent of all of them, National Society would be right in the top two or three in my mind, but International, the senior. They are, they move, maybe follow closer than that. That there are very strict standards. I can't comment if they're all signing them, that's a lot of building issue. And that's something we can investigate, and those, Mark is right, that just because we don't necessarily have that information, but it's readily available, it probably is happening in some way, shape, or form, there's nothing better. There are, with the board's permission, there are a number of coaches on here, on the call, on the Zoom. They're participating, and I wanted to give them an opportunity if they have some additional thoughts that they wanted to share with the board regarding their understanding of the code for athletes and even the, many of them also co-coach their coaches also.
It's volunteer right up there. Oh, Keith, so I, after seeing the, I went and contacted some of my fellow schools and teacher. And ours is a little more strict than some other schools. Wilson High School, they do five-day suspension and then twenty-five day, or twenty-five percent. But they also add the two counseling days. And then there's other schools that first, one is like a slap on the wrist and they kind of give you a warning. But the big thing is there is going to be change to this. I know I talked to a lot of the coaches and we just want to be involved and have higher say as well than if we do make changes to the code.
I, I would say the earliest, most optimistic, if there are changes, would not occur until the spring season. It's, it's not going to happen tonight or tomorrow. Just you can't change it that fast. And spring may even be out.
Well, in my mind, honestly, we're going to make changes. I figured this was going to be a discussion. I was thinking, oh, start fresh in the next school year with a change. That way everyone has time to digest it, understand it, know. And those parent athlete meetings are going to begin over the summer. But this also gives, in my mind, this also gives us the time to investigate and look at all those other co-curriculars. Because I agree, we should have moved on to the same state. Like you said, they're putting on our school colors and we don't representing us the next year. But what was your, what's your suggestion? As far as, as far as the changes?
I definitely like the, the counseling sessions. I think, I mean, if this is, they should have somebody to talk to and somebody to help out.
I mean, are you, are you in agreement with the way it's written right now? Just adding the counseling piece?
I am, yeah. And I, because it also says, not board approved, but it does say that it has full support of the board. So I mean, the board's along. Chris and I talked today, and this was more than one person that stood this together. And I think a couple of other coaches, it was a collaboration of coaches and the athletic director that went through and put this together. So I mean, it's not just like one person together. So, yeah, I'm in agreement.
You read any from other schools that you would recommend?
Like I said, I've just talked about my friends, my, my best friend coaches at Wilson, she teaches at Wilson High School, Lake Ontario. Like I said, there's this twenty-five percent, thirty percent, but everything else pretty much follows the same progression. First offenses, the thirty-two percent, second offense, they're, they're done, a hundred percent, they're the second best.
And can I chime in? I coached at Pine Valley before coming to Salamanca. And our policy at Pine Valley was twenty-five percent for the first offense, and then it carried over. And I just want to add, I totally agree with Dr. Beeler in saying that we've got to prepare our athletes for what's coming in college. I know as a coach, I would, I would probably hold them to a higher standard than anybody else. Just for the simple fact that a lot of my athletes think and want to pursue a college career. And college is much more stringent. They don't get the second chances that they would get here. So like Keith is saying, I definitely like to see the counseling piece because obviously our job is to teach them. We don't want to just, you know, throw the book at them like has been said. But I definitely feel like at times we don't have strong enough consequences. And I don't want to see this laying by any means.
Thanks, Bray. Who's next?
I'll chime in. Guys. So.
Hi, Casey.
Hi, I agree with what Brielle and Keith have said so far. I also really enjoy the fact of Dr. Beeler bringing up the fact that we do need to hold our athletes to that college standard. I have had some of my toughest case kiddos who I thought, there is no way they're going to keep in touch with me after the fact because it is constant headbutting, come back to me and say consistently, thank you so much for being tough on us. I didn't get it at the time, but you prepared me for what my college coaches and what my college teammates were going to expect of me. And my life is so much easier as a result of that. So as everyone has said, I am in agreement. I feel oftentimes when our athletes do have a first instance, it's not always looked at as a first instance. For example, I've had kiddos start fights. And I not, I didn't always feel supported in the consequences that I would choose as a coach. There were times when I would just ask for a team apology, and that would be too much of an expectation. So I'm hesitant to agree with our numbers for first, second, and third level offenses because I feel it takes us twelve chances to really get to a first level offense unless it is very clear, cut and dry, I saw you doing this, you were at school at the time, and there's no, you know, irrefutable evidence. So I would like to try and see some tightening up in that regard across the board with all the coaches in agreement with the admin behind us and just that full support and carry through.
Chad, can I just ask you to clarify when you would hold this parent meetings for fall, winter, and spring sports roughly, not the June date?
Two weeks or so before the start dates are, fall start date is August twenty-third. I believe we did it the two Tuesdays or Mondays prior to the start of the season. Our winter season was eleven eighteen, so I think we did it November or whatever, sixth and thirteenth. And then in the spring, it's March fourteenth, so we'll probably have two or three maybe Zooms. You know, the couple of weeks before. I don't like to do them just in one week. It'd be somewhere out there. But that would be the goal. And I do know in the past, prior to COVID, the attendance was better. Tried to, you know, evolve a little bit and had to do some more.
So would it be reasonable to suggest the Chad and the coaches and the board here that we can anticipate changes and will micromanage those specific levels? Then there would be a report back to the board about what this will look like for the twenty-two, twenty-three seasons in July? Reorg meetings, the basically the first or second Tuesday of the month or the second Thursday of the month. Is that a reasonable timetable?
Yeah, and I, I mean, the one, I'd like that or student athletes.
Yeah.
But there's, it'll be three months to get together.
Yeah.
We can probably do that. It's, you know, it's that would be recreating, we're not really recreating the whole thing. We're just looking to make sure that we're, honestly, I think. Let's give it to July then. It'll be good. You know, because what we want to do is incorporate some of the restorative practices that we have, right? And be proactive and then ensure that the counseling pieces are in place. So that, and we can begin to take a look at, as Bertos said, at a varsity club and some of the other expectations that we might have for our athletes. That could be one nice big factor. That.
See Letterman's Jeff, it's coming back.
Oh, yeah.
Bill wants one.
I got one.
Who else is out there? Who else has any comments?
There's some comments in the chat and some people chat.
These are from early on. Yeah, this was.
They couldn't hear us.
Okay.
What about Lori Lafferty-John? Probably one of our longest tenured coaches.
I knew you were going to call me out, Carrie John.
You knew exactly I was going to call you out.
Yeah, I, I think that I totally agree with what everyone else has already said with the counseling piece. I think that's just a strong component to add for our kind of kids. And, you know, sitting down as a, as a group because it, you know, it affects all of us and all of the people that we work with, I would look forward to that opportunity.
Thanks, Lori.
You're welcome.
That's the one thing I want to make sure of is that, is the board. I know sometimes we can stick our nose where it doesn't belong in the best of intentions. But I want to make sure that we're not overriding any of the authority that Chad has or the, or any of the club advisors or anything else. Cause I did appreciate Mark's comment about most people do have rules. I agree with that. Most people have consequences, you know, so I want to make sure that we're not doing something that's going against what they're trying to build for their program. Because I think that's important. But I also want to say the counseling to me is probably the biggest thing out there. Especially right now when you drive down the street and you can see about twenty-five different Goodleaf shops in the area that almost, you know, you get why some kids might, might think it's, it's okay when it, when it might not be. And I think it's important to understand what we expect. And just because it might be legal for somebody, it's not legal for them. And it's not expected of them, and it's not what we want. And this is why.
Well, I'll throw, I'll throw in there the piece about alcohol too. It's the same thing. This has been around and it's prevalent and everybody knows about it. Alcohol is the most destructive force on the planet. And it is the most socially acceptable destructive force. Everybody drinks. Everybody plans their lives around alcohol. But it doesn't mean we have to endorse it or approve it or accept it for our kids.
Agreed.
So that brings me to something from, you know, Chad touched on it a little bit. Various other people about the whole educational piece, you know? I don't know exactly where we are, the message that we're sending as a whole. But I would like a better grasp on that with exactly the climate that we have now. I mean, we have so many dispensaries here. There's so many great areas. I think we just need to just revisit it. I don't know what that would look like. But I think that those things would go in line with this to kind of even help get that other educational aspect. Hope of this whole policy. But I'm definitely for the counseling piece. I think that's huge. So whatever way that's got to be done.
I was just thinking, somebody mentioned the community service a little while ago. Bob, you there? Maybe that's a consideration. Offense number one, yeah, you're going to counsel. Offense number two, you're going to counsel and you're doing community service because obviously you didn't learn the first time.
Yeah, one of the things that, from the counseling addictions matrix, if an individual is truly addicted as opposed to perhaps a teenager or someone who's just experiencing it, there are key similarities, but there are also stark differences. Someone who's truly wrestling with addictions, it is not uncommon for them to be in a rehab relationship two or three or four times before they get a handle internally on the demons and the influences that cause them to go down the addiction route, whatever their run of choice is. And if we catch the students before they get to that point, everything else is a lot easier. So having that relationship with kids, Chris in the building principals and Alex, how I like Chris because he's the only principal here are doing really good work with those restorative circles and building those relationships. Corinne was on the call. I think she's still there. We were talking about the social, emotional learning progress. If we invest in getting kids to make good and more appropriate decisions earlier, then we won't be in a situation where we have to give offense three in a one-year ban. So those are all good things and those interventions, those strategies. And I guess the last thing with the component of counseling is it doesn't necessarily need to be a certified counselor. We have individuals on staff that have great and wonderful, powerful relationships with kids. It happened in one of these instances where having the ability to connect with them, build, build areas with your student can move mountains. And then we can link them with an appropriate mental health counselor, addictions counselor, drug and alcohol counselor, or whatever the issue that precipitates the experience with dealing with substances can be. So we have a lot of counselors on staff. Dr. Beeler will tell you at a later event. Then looking to add some additional counselors to the budget process. So, you know, I think we're in line with that, Jessica. And I think we just need to make sure we get our mental health staff together to talk about this. Because other communities are dealing with the dispensaries. I would be hard for us to identify a community, a school community that is dealing with the dispensary population what Salma is. I would be hard for us to find another district that is experiencing that. Well, I, yeah, there's quite a few of them. So we do have to pivot as to what we're doing and how we're interacting, helping those who fits, fits that.
We can bring people in for the staff too. I mean, there's got to be experts out there that come in and train teachers or talk to them about what they're assigned and what to do.
Yeah, so it sounds like we have a charge for the athletic department to come back and report to us. And in the meantime, we're not going to make, so I made sure I heard this right. We're not recommending any additional changes to the current plan until they get their work done. But we always have the opportunity to, the building principal, the athletic director, to recommend and refer counseling services to any student, athlete, or co-curricular that may be experiencing difficulties as some type of intervention and diversion and corrective action for. Sound good? You ready?
Sounds good to me. I mean, is, is that's, that's where the athletic department, you know, they're comfortable with it. And, you know, that's, that's what I want to make sure of.
Yes, we are. This is a good opportunity to kind of mold a few things together. Things we've been talking about. Good opportunity to refresh the process. Sure. Thank you.
Yogi. This is Ray and Mr. John. That's all the agenda.
Well. Am I doing the agenda or are you, Carrie?
My for rock scissors.
This is your live.
Finish it up. That was a little business. We have number four, board information, reports, discussions, the upcoming events. And if there's nothing else, we'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Just to clarify, Janet, for the upcoming events, they added a finance meeting for next week? Has the finance meeting been added and other finance? Yes, at five thirty next Tuesday. Okay, that's it. I'll make more. Back off to my deals. I did my bread. Any questions? Concerns? Thank you, everyone. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstained, wants to carry, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
It's Carrie.